We are going to spend the next several minutes in the forum doing some questions and answers with our candidates for Janesville City Council. We're blessed to have four of the six candidates here today. We're missing two. One, Billy Ray McCoy, since his regrets, he is home recovering from a nasty virus and some broken ribs. So wish him well going forward. And the other candidate who was not here today, Larry Squire, is on a family vacation and he will be back at the Rotary Meeting on Thursday at 6:45 in the morning. So if you want to come join us then, we'll give you another opportunity to see the council members and hopefully Billy Ray will join us then too.
If you want to just keep the microphone, I think you may be able to turn it over to Paul and I'll flick my way around.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to be here. And this is our first of four forums this week and it's our second of five that we've had for this election season. And the Rock County Civics Academy is a nonpartisan, good government group created by Common Sense Rock County to educate and involve the community on issues facing local elected officials. And you mentioned Rich Bruger, Dewayne Seaberson, and myself, Paul Murphy. We started this organization over two years ago. One of our other partners is Dan Puszcik, Puszcik News Agency, and then also Kim Erhart, a familiar face from the Janesville School District that came aboard. And so the Rock County Civics Academy provides forums such as today. And we do this through presentations solely presented upon financial support we receive from our sponsors and also the listener. And on the table, you'll see some cards. And if you feel compelled, feel free to make a donation to us. Our presenting sponsor is Avana Quaffia at Milton Avenue. And the program would not be possible without the ongoing support of the Italian House and Big Radio, WCLO, WGBL. We also have supporters by Ragnar LTV and Ragnar Software, the John Westfall family, Dan Puszcik, Janesville News Reporter, American Awards and Promotions, Stockman Property Development LLC, Tim Lindau, Nowland Law. And what I say is if you believe in the mission, we have ways in which you can donate to us and helps us keep up our cause. And with that, I'm going to turn the mic over to Rich Bruger, today's moderator.
Thank you, Paul. We had the opportunity to go over the, I guess, the rules of conduct for the forum with the candidates. They've agreed that the question and answer session, the answers will be limited to 60 seconds. And we're going to provide an opportunity for you and the audience to submit questions that we will try and include in the last 15 minutes of the event. So if you look on your tables, there's some paper. Hopefully somebody has a pen. Those odd things that we rarely use anymore for computer age. Please feel free to write down your questions, keep them legible and concise, and we will try and fit them in in the last portion of the program. So with that, and without any further ado, I'd like to begin our forum with the first question, and it will go to Aaron Burdick. Aaron, what event or events caused you to decide to run for election for the city council?
Well, first, I'd like to thank the Noon Rotary for sponsoring this event. I'm currently sitting on the city council. I'm running for reelection. My motivations are, I strongly believe in public safety. With my background, public safety is the backbone of any thriving community. Public and private partnerships, I believe that there are certain situations where the city should get involved in projects that might otherwise not get completed that would benefit the greater citizens of the whole. So, and then also economic diversity. You know, we want to bring in businesses so that we're not solely reliable on one or two companies that dictates how the city's going to prosper. We want that variety so we can weather any economic downturn. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Josh Erdman, same question. What events or event caused you to decide to run for election to the Janesville City Council?
For the last 20-plus years, I've been a public servant as a firefighter, paramedic. And in the last five years or so, I've become more involved in government. So for the unsayable Janesville Committee for the last four years and have attended a lot of committee meetings, et cetera, in the city. And what I've found in that time period is that I feel like sometimes there's some lack of transparency, some lack of engagement of the citizens. And I'd like to see more of that. So I'm seeking out the city council as an option. I feel like I can bring a good analytical mind and ability and career of listening to the public to this forefront and engage the citizens. And this is one more way for me to serve the public in the future.
Thank you, Josh. Matt Gonzalez, same question. What event or events caused you to decide to run for election to the Janesville City Council?
Sure thing. Hi, everybody. I'm Matt Gonzalez. And the main reason that I got involved is I think that my generation isn't really politically involved. I think that it's important for us to be involved. I don't know anyone in my age range that even knows who their local officials are. So that's a bit sad for me. And I, you're going to be the change you see in the world. This is probably the best way to do it.
Thank you, Matt. Paul Williams, same question.
Well, I don't remember what situation made me first run. I first ran in 2000 and then I got off in 2008 and then got back on in 2014. So this is 16 years I've been on the council. The reason I want to run again and get back or stay on the council is we have some big things coming up. One, of course, is the GM Jatco site and the process of the city taking that over and the cleanup and the redevelopment of that site, which is going to take a long time. But I believe that I can be helpful in that process to make sure that it's done right. And the other one, big one, I guess, on the agenda is the Woodman Sports and Convention Center that's being built. I want to make sure that it's built right, built under budget, and then, of course, the process on who's going to run it and how it's going to perform. So I want to be part of that.
Thank you, Paul. The next question, we will begin with Josh Erdman. Josh, there's only so many tax dollars available to pay for city services. What are your highest priorities?
My overall priority as a council member is going to be first to work to improve transparency and public participation. I'd like to make sure that at every opportunity that we have to move forward with projects, that we make sure that we engage the citizens that are right in that area in particular, not just have an open meeting at City Hall at a time that maybe isn't convenient for everyone, but make sure that they, people can show up and actually voice their opinions and have a path forward. I want to make sure that we revamp the zoning system to allow us to have economic growth that will combine both commercial and affordable housing opportunities. Both those things need to happen for us to have decent jobs and available for the citizens, as well as to have those housing opportunities and a supply of housing in order to move forward. And I want to make sure that we eliminate barriers to housing development and business growth in the city by improving efficiencies within the city. Lastly, I want to make sure that as we move forward with that, that we make sure that we have the managing money to, or the operating budget to move forward with all the needs that we have for the city and make sure that as we take on new projects, that we don't interfere with the basic needs.
Thank you, Josh. Matt Gonzalez, there's only so many tax dollars available to pay for city services. What are your highest priorities?
For me, the biggest things are just making sure the community is safe, secure, and that we are representing everyone. So I think one of the bigger things that we're going to see with this new Woodman Center coming in and any money that's going towards that, we're concerned that it's not going to fully support the entire city. So I think taking a look at the South Side, taking a look at the corridors that don't have as much attention in the business would be good. I think making sure that we focus programs towards housing would be huge. I know that a lot of people are concerned about recent issues with certain landpart that left a few people displaced. Few is putting it lightly. We all know it's over 100 families. But housing has been an issue for longer than that. It's been an issue long before just this most recent turn. So I'd like to take a look at different housing programs, making sure that we're working with different people. I know Mark Perry. I've also been in communication with Community Action down in Beloit. So just looking into that, making sure that we have a place for the new generation to live.
Thank you, Matt. Paul Williams, there's only so many tax dollars available for city services. What are your priorities?
Well, anybody that's looked at a budget for the city of Janesville, you see that there's not a lot of pork on the budget. We have a very tight budget every year. The majority of the budget does go for employees and the most, probably, I think, more than half of that goes to employees for the police and fire department. We really, though, those are priorities. We don't have a good city. We can have all kinds of amenities, but if we have high crime rate or we don't have the city services for the fire department, it's not really going to be a good town to live in. We have, we've been blessed with a very low crime rate in Janesville and good fire department as far as response times. So there's not a whole bunch to do. We have to make sure that we have all the needs and then look at what we have left over for the ones.
Thank you, Paul. Aaron Burdick, there's only so many city tax dollars available. What are your highest priorities?
Like I said earlier, public safety is a high priority and touting a 40-year crime law in the city of Janesville is a priority to maintain those levels. We need to make sure that we're retaining our good employees. We have to make sure that they're being trained and equipped to do their job. And the other focuses, as far as the budget goes, is personnel. Again, we want to make sure that we're recruiting, recruiting and retaining the best and the brightest because when we, when we encounter, when we encounter redoing the zoning law or ordinances and we've got larger projects that the city hasn't seen before, we have to make sure that we have the right people in place and they're smart enough. If they don't know the answer, then we go and hire somebody that does have the answer. Also infrastructure, maintaining roads, those kind of things. Thank you.
Thank you. For this next question, we will begin with Matt Gonzalez. Matt, assuming that you're elected to a term in the city council, how should we measure your performance during the course of the next two years as a member of that council?
I think that's more up to the people on measuring me. Obviously, I'm a newcomer, so someone such as Aaron, who has a history of working on the council, or Paul for that matter, you have a track record to look at with them. For myself, I am a tech guy, so I am big on metrics. I consistently work through metrics, day in, day out. I am constantly looking at spreadsheets, reports, user lists, you name it. So for me, it's a little easier to get that data together. If it's something that helps, I'd be happy to put the data together myself, show what my voting history is going to be, show full track record. But I think when it comes to whether I'm doing a good job or not, that's more on whether the people feel I'm doing a good job or not. I can't tell you if I'm doing a good job.
Thank you, Matt. Paul Williams, same question. Assuming you're reelected to a term in the city council, how should the citizens measure your performance during the next two years?
Well, I think, again, it's track record. I always try to do the research. I don't just look at the, what's on the agenda and what's being proposed and what the administration is recommending. I try and do my own research on issues, especially those that are controversial. And then I also try to always explain why I voted either yes or no on an issue. And I think that's important. Sometimes, you know, we've had council members in the past, you just vote no and then don't explain it. And I think it's, does it disservice. You need to explain why you're voting.
Thank you, Paul. Aaron Burdick, same question. Assuming that you're elected to a term in the city council, how would, how should the citizens measure your performance during the next two years?
Well, obviously, we look for feedback. We are available via phone, phone number, email that the city provides us. We're accepting to the feedback. Basically, we're not going to be good at our job unless we hear from, from the citizens of telling us what they want. You know, it's not necessarily the loudest people out there that you need to listen to, but what you need is participation. We can only do so much. And we can only, if we don't get feedback, we can only assume that we're doing the right thing. So, you know, communication is two-part. You know, everybody can work on communication. I'm a very busy person, but I try to read my emails in a timely fashion. I try to return phone calls in a timely fashion. But we also need the citizens to take more of a proactive approach of communicating with us. And really, I want to know what you guys think so that I can carry your mission forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Josh Erdman, assuming you're elected to a term in the city council, how should the citizens measure your performance during the next two years?
I'm running on the basis of I'm going to bring the same decision-making I have as a paramedic in identifying life-threatening problems and coming up with life-saving solutions as a council member. I will do that by listening to the public. I will do that by analyzing the data that's there and asking tough questions when the information that's brought to us doesn't make sense, and then building a plan to go forward and make sure that the city moves forward, the entire city moves forward as a whole in terms of economic growth and other opportunities. So in two years, I expect you to have found that I have, I have gotten out, just as I am in the last few weeks, gotten out and talked to the citizens, tried to create more opportunities for the citizens to participate, that I have improved transparency with the city by maybe taking some items off of consent agendas to make sure that they get discussed, as was recently done, for instance, regarding the GM property. I'd like to see more of that happen as part of the council so that the citizens understand what's going on and why the decisions are being made. And at the end of that time period, hopefully, you agree with me.
Thank you, Josh. This next question, we're going to begin with Paul Williams, and it does speak to the issue of citizen participation. It's been argued that much of the work developing the Woodman's Convention Center project was completed outside of public scrutiny. In fact, it took a similar behind-the-scenes effort and an interim city manager to bring the project to a regular public viewing at a city council meeting going forward. Is that, is that the process we should expect to continue, or is there a change that you might be willing to propose in how the citizens are involved in such projects?
I guess you're asking, is the, the new process where it's more in the open should continue? Yes. And that's basically, I'm not against the Woodman Sports and Convention Center. My problem was with the process. This is a very expensive building, city building. The city council in the beginning had very little input. It was citizen committee to design it and decide what type of building it should be and how big it should be. I am very glad that we are getting more and more information up to the point when it was decided to build it and the reward of the contract. We are having another update tonight at the council meeting. Somebody who's interested can come to that. But yes, I want to see more input and more out in the open on the discussion of those particular types of issues. Thank you.
Aaron Burdick, same question.
Could you repeat, please?
Absolutely. It's been argued that much of the work developing the Woodman Sports and Convention Center project was completed outside public scrutiny. In fact, it took a similar behind-the-scenes effort to convince an interim city manager to start bringing the project to regular council meetings for, for consideration and discussion. Is that the process we should expect going forward, or is there some change you might propose?
Well, you know, I can't really speak to very early on in the process. However, it was evident that, that it appeared that there was decisions being made behind the scenes and, and maybe there was secret meetings being held and things like that, which there was no evidence of that. But what some of that stuff did was bring a little bit more thought process of, hey, we need to do better at, at being transparent and being upfront about it. And I think as the time went on, the last year, year and a half, I think they, I think it became that way. Now, we, I would say probably for the last nine months, we've been getting regular updates at the city council meetings. So as of right now, I feel pretty good of the information that's getting passed on. Obviously, the city is working behind the scenes to, to do different things, but for the most part, any big decisions have been pretty much upfront. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Josh Erdman, same question.
The process of the Woodman Center is one of the prime things that came to light and is the reason that I'm running on the transparency issue. I feel like it was a prime example of what we need to not be doing in the future. And we had a lot of opportunities to make improvements in communication across the city. The city has not a very good job of sort of getting that information out to the citizens. And we have a real opportunity now that we're moving forward with the potential of redevelopment of the GM project. Here's another opportunity to this time do it the right way. Make sure that the people of the South Side in particular that are going to be most affected by that are engaged. Make sure that they have some input into what goes into that, that it does both the, has the ability to both build economic growth and housing opportunities for people, as well as still have the kind of feel that we want for the city of Janesville. And those are the types of opportunities that need to happen. We can't treat City Hall as this white building on a hill that people have to approach in order to get heard. We should be doing it in the communities themselves so that they have the actual input opportunities.
Thank you, Josh. Matt Gonzalez, same question.
Yep. I mean, it's been said by everyone up here already. I think that it's something we need to ensure that the citizens are the ones making major decisions like that or at the very least be involved in it. It can't be something that's just coming from on high, especially when it's something that's going to be at a cost to the citizens long term. I am a tech guy. Tech is pretty democratic. Tech is very open. And the few people that aren't open when it comes to tech, you know who they are because everyone is on them about the fact that they're hiding something. When it comes to issues like this, I am very big on the idea of transparency. I do not think that security goes outside of anything other than your personal life. That is the only time when security is important to me.
Thank you, Matt. This next question, we will begin with you, Aaron. Building code interpretation and enforcement has long been a point of contention with investors in Janesville. Name two things specifically that can be done to improve communication in that area.
Well, one, we're, we're starting a process undergoing the revamping of our zoning ordinance. And with that, well, it'll be more, from my understanding, talking to city officials, that things will be more clear and laid out. It's outdated. It'll give us opportunities to bring some, some zoning changes from downtown, such as mixed-use commercial and residential outside the downtown. So what was the, can you go back?
Two examples of things that you would do to improve communication and the operations of the building division of the Public Works Department?
So, so obviously redoing the ordinances is a huge thing. And then we have an emphasis of, of the product of customer service. So we need to make sure that that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Josh Erdman, the building code interpretation and enforcement has long been a point of contention with investors in Janesville. Name two things that can be done to improve that area.
Speaking with small business owners in the city, I, one of the complaints that I've heard is that they find that it's very difficult to navigate the system within the city. And so we need to improve communication. We also need to offer opportunities for them to be able to navigate that and get through the issues that, you know, we have ordinances, we have things in place, and they should be there. But it should not be a guessing process for those individuals as they go through the process. So I'd like to see some streamlining of the city system to make sure that it is easy for them to reach all of the goals of enforcement without having to jump through multiple hoops and each department sort of working against each other. I'd like to see that streamlining to get better development. I also think in general, there needs to be better communication and enforcement activities going on. We'd have to look at, obviously, there's a limit on staffing and funding when it comes to those sorts of things. But again, if we can improve efficiency, perhaps we can find more operating cost opportunities for enforcement and make sure that some of our neglected commercial corridors are getting that enforcement so that we can continue to build them up and make them look the way that they should.
Thank you. Matt Gonzalez, same question. The building code interpretation and enforcement has long been a point of contention with investors in Janesville. Name two things that can be done to improve that area.
So I actually had to look over building code in my time running for city council here. It's not something that I was familiar with. I admittedly have only moved to Janesville about five years ago from New York City, where we have a very different interpretation of building code. And so being able to look at it over myself, there is a weird, I think, clearer definitions for one. If you are seeking to develop in Janesville, it should be something that's easily available online. I know a small business owner down on Main Street who actually had to go directly to City Hall in order to actually get any of that information and then to then further be directed to other people in order to process all of that information. If we can make available online things like our, sorry, any information that is relevant to a citizen, if you can check when your garbage is being collected, if you can check any of that information relevant to you, same should apply to a business owner, whether they live within city limits or not.
Thank you, Matthew. Paul Williams, building code interpretation and enforcement has long been a contention, contentious issue with investors in Janesville. Name two things that can be done to improve that area of city performance.
I've gotten some good feedback from some people that have been doing some building projects in Janesville on our new building inspector, that they have been, I think, given, they're more flexible on doing interpretation on some of the ordinances. Some of them, you know, are just black and white and therefore are safety. And some of those you just can't change. But there are a few of them that, that can, that are subject to it, are kind of a gray area. And I'm hearing that our new building inspector is able to do that and not bend the rules, but the interpretation fits the area and will keep everybody safe, but at least not saying everything is in black and white. There are some gray areas. And I think the biggest thing to do is going to be the zoning update. And I am currently on the plan commission, and that's what we're going to be going through. And I hope to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I would remind folks that if you have questions that you'd like to ask the panel, jot them down on a sheet of paper, raise your hand, and Paul or somebody will come around, they'll grab them and we'll get them up. We've got about 18 minutes left in this cycle, so I'd love to get some questions from you so that we can make sure that your thoughts are being shared as well with the candidates. This next question will begin with you, Josh Erdman. Homelessness is an issue in Janesville. Affordable housing is another issue in Janesville, and there's those that would argue that it may be related to some degree. Do you have any specific proposals that you have in mind to take to the council to address those serious challenges?
I think the recent issue with the renters makes it clear that the city needs to be prepared for those types of situations to continue to occur. And we need to be ready to act as the facilitator to bring in federal, state, county resources to deal with those issues when they, when they happen and make sure that we can hopefully avoid those sorts of circumstances occurring in the future. Mainly, the housing is a supply issue. We just don't have enough housing. We don't have anywhere near as much housing building going on right now in Janesville as I know is occurring in Dane County where I work. And we need to make sure that we have a co-joined economic growth and housing opportunity, which really comes down to that zoning revamp, which is the most important thing and the thing that I'm pushing to make sure that that moves forward soon, is to have that mixed-use opportunity where we can bring in both commercial development as well as housing development at the same time and make both of those more prosperous for the city to encourage more growth and more economic development.
Thank you, Josh. Matt Gonzalez, homelessness is an issue in Janesville. Affordable housing is an issue in Janesville, and there's some correlation between the two. Are there a couple of specific proposals you have in mind to propose to address those issues?
I don't have any proposals that I can speak to immediately, but I am working with a few different groups that look specifically at homelessness, look at economic development and housing. The bigger thing that I think we need to take away from it is the idea that affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean that someone is in a undesirable state. Affordable housing is just the idea of it being roughly 30% of your income. So it's something that is affordable long-term. I think that we have an issue in Janesville with housing in general because looking ahead at a new generation, we don't have all of the housing that we're going to need to keep our younger generation with. our younger generation within Janesville. I've seen it happen not just here, I've seen it happen in other parts. I have friends that currently live in Madison that are squeezed into apartments because there's not homes for them to buy and not for capability, just for lack of access to a home. So taking a look at that, making sure, sorry.
Thank you, Matt. Paul Williams, homelessness is an issue in Janesville. Affordable housing is an issue in Janesville, and some would argue there's a correlation between the two. Can you name a couple of things that you might propose to address those challenges in Janesville?
Well, if I had a magic wand to fix that, I think I would be getting paid a lot more than what we get paid to do the job. Homelessness is not just a Janesville thing, it's a nationwide. We have to keep looking to see how we can solve that problem. There are some that are homeless that don't want to be homeless and the, basically the county really has those social programs. The city doesn't get the money for those type of social programs. That's more of a county issue. What the city can look at though is to make sure that we, and what we're going to be doing and would like to continue to do in the plan commission, is the rezoning and see how we can develop new areas of the city that will have those affordable housing for people. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And Aaron Rüddig, homelessness is an issue in Janesville. Affordable housing is an issue in Janesville. There's some that would argue there is a correlation between the two. Proposals on how we can address those in positive way?
Well, the federal definition for affordable housing is allocating 30% of your gross income housing. So there, we did have a presentation at one of our council meetings where rent was basically 1,300 bucks per, a month, and a starting firefighter, a $50,000 salary wouldn't be able to afford to live and rent that, rent that apartment on their own with all the other monthly bills. So affordable housing isn't necessarily, you know, for, for the poor. The problem is this, is construction costs are up 400% over the last five years, right? So the cost to build is higher, cost to borrow is now higher. So those are some headwinds. However, the city has two major things that they can help with. One is TIF financing for multi-unit housing as well as allocating property for special development projects to, for multiple hous, or for multi-housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, the next question, we will begin with you, Matt. Do you support, and this is from the audience, so do you support current plans for the GN Jaco site? Why or why not?
I don't believe that we have a solid plan yet. I think that we still need to figure out if there's actually going to be a sale. That's kind of last I had heard. That's what is currently going on is that our council has put through to evaluate the site, to make sure that we know what we can offer for it and if it's going to be fair and if it's something feasible. Obviously, we would like to develop that. I know I would like to see that developed into housing. I would like to see that developed into, I mean, anything more than just the light that it currently is. But there's also those smaller properties around that area. Obviously, the actual GN Jaco site itself is what people are concerned with, but there are smaller property zones around that that are also going to be affected. So I think that we need to see what comes of the discovery on this, and I would like to be involved in the process of making sure it's done properly going forward.
Thank you, Matt. Paul Williams, same question. Do you support current plans for the GN Jaco site and why or why not?
Well, again, the only current plan right now is for the city to go through and have evaluation done and appraisal done of those properties, which include the GM and the Jaco site and some other properties there in the area. The owners of those properties will then have an appraisal also done and then there'll be a meeting of the minds. And if there's not a meeting of the minds on the appraisals, then it then goes to a court case. And that's the way that the law is written. It's written to protect not only the taxpayers, but of course, the property owners. So that's the plan right at the moment, and I did agree with that. We'll have to see. It'll be a multi-step, multi-year process to do. We have, it may change from one day to the next of either being commercial all the way to residential, to something in between when we get to that point. But at this time, I believe it is the best thing to pour the city of Janesville to take that property over. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Rüddig, do you support the current plans for the GN Jaco site, why or why not?
Well, the initial step, yes. I mean, I support it, it's matter of record. Basically, what, what the city council did in the, in the city is they created a blighted tit a little while ago, which then allows us to go ahead and start this legal process. We haven't, we haven't, it's not costing us any money at this point. Like Paul said, there's some property evaluations back and forth. We just can't take people's property. Have to be compensated for that. However, I'm, I'm sorry, forever. Oh, okay. I thought you said something. I'm sorry. All right. Basically, we haven't committed any money at this point. There, there is, would be some hesitation when it comes down to taking control of this property and how it's, what it's going to cost to remediate the site for development. And at that point in time, that's when the questions really start need to be asked before we make that monetary commitment.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. John Erdman, do you support the current plans for the GN Jaco site? Why or why not?
The GM plant side of things is obviously a market failure point at this point. Private industry isn't going to be able to come in, potentially invest that type of money to clean up the site in order to do what needed to be done. And so for that property, it makes sense that brownfield, we have more opportunities as a city to potentially seek the type of grant funding from the feds and from the state in order to proceed with that and make that something that, that makes sense for the city of Janesville. As for the surrounding area, because there are other properties that are also included as part of that, I do think there's a question mark at this point whether the timing of moving forward on those or the inclusion of those in the relocation, whether that's a good idea or not. If they're not polluted properties where that's the best advantageous circumstance, then perhaps allowing the market to do what it should as we move forward with other pieces of the property would make some sense. But at this point, we need a good strategic plan of how we're going to seek those grants and move forward with the process and know what the costs are before we fully commit.
Thank you, Josh. In, want to honor everybody's time commitments, so we'll be as close to 1:00 as we possibly can to bring this to a conclusion. So that's going to bring us to the point of closing remarks, and we've allowed each candidate two minutes for their closing remarks. And I want to incorporate a couple of the ideas that are in the remainder of the questions I got out of the audience. One is in your closing remarks, please speak, if you would, to your personal professional background that you bring to the table as a, as a member or a potential member of the Janesville City Council and somehow speak to the issue of transparency as well. And we will begin that conversation with you, Paul Williams. Paul?
I want to thank the Janesville Nunean Rotary for having this. WCLO here is here, I want to thank them also, and the Rock County Civics Academy for putting this on. I'm a lifelong Janesville resident. I enjoyed my time on the council. I think I have some more to give and I want to continue with the process, especially not only with the council, but with the plan commission. The, there are a lot of good things happening in Janesville. You've seen some other cities that have lost a major company such as GM in other cities that, back in the day, we were told the last person to leave Janesville turned the light off. And that certainly is not the case. I think we're a great city and I want to continue to do what I can do to help the city become even greater. So I appreciate you, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Aaron Rüddig, your closing comments?
I, first of all, I want to thank the Nunean Rotary and the Civics Academy and WCLO for putting this on. I'm Aaron Rüddig. I'm currently on the city council, seeking reelection. I'm a lifelong resident, married, two adult children. I, my professional life, I've spent the last 25 years in law enforcement. I currently hold the rank of commander. I'm in charge of our law enforcement services division. I maintain a $14 million budget and 79, I lead 79 employees underneath me. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, went to school as an adult while I was working. I'm also a graduate of University of Northwestern School of Staff and Command. You know, the last two years on the city council, I've been able to establish relationships with the city officials, private organizations, private citizens, and, you know, that's allowed me as, you know, after the first year, now the second year, to get better and better and more comfortable of understanding how the city works because if you're not involved in it, I mean, I'm in public service, but if you're not involved in this type of work, it's eye-opening and it takes a while to get, to get up to speed on it. So I feel like I'm hitting my stride right now. I believe in public safety, obviously my background, economic diversity. Again, you know, we don't want to rely on that one manufacturer like GM. We want to diversify and our public and private partnerships. Some people don't believe in it, but it's got to be used sparingly, right? TIF agreements with, for multi-housing, businesses that normally wouldn't be able to do their expansion or come to Janesville, we have to be supportive of that. The other thing is, is housing. We can have all the businesses in the world, but they're not going to come here if we don't have a labor pool for them. And you can't have a labor pool without homes. So, you know, I want to continue marching forward on those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Aaron, John Erdman, time for your closing.
Thank you for having us. Again, just reiterating, what I plan to bring to the council is after 20 years of being a firefighter, paramedic, SWAT medic, a lot of background in public safety, what I plan to bring, most importantly from that, is a clear decision-making process. We don't know what things are going to come up in the next two years or even into the future, but I will have a clear decision-making process of how I will move forward in analyzing those things and vote, voting as a result on the council. I've been a Janesville resident for over 15 years. I have a master's degree in emergency management during which I've got a lot of experience with operational planning, risk versus benefit analysis, community response and event recovery in the short, medium, and long term. So all those things I will also be bringing as a member as well. Again, as being a member of public safety, Councilman Williams mentions multiple times, we have a great public safety presently, but I'm also fully aware of the fact that we have an aging population. We're only really at the tip of the baby boomer generation, aging into the, the real strong needs, in particular for ambulances on a regular basis. And we need to make sure that we have that as a need that is able to be supported. We can take on other projects, but we need to make sure that those operating costs that are present are not going to interfere with making sure that the needs of the citizens are present. And in my mind, that's making sure that we have those basic needs of public safety, snow removal, sanitation, those sorts of things that keep our city available for the businesses to come into and places for people to want to live. Again, my plan will be to listen to the citizens. I think that's where my transparency piece comes in. I'm walking around talking to people. I'm going to analyze. I will look at the data as objectively as possible and then building a plan forward and building partnerships to move Janesville forward. Please vote April 2nd.
Thank you, Josh. Matt Gonzalez, your closing comments?
Sure. I'm Matt Gonzalez. As I've stated before, we moved to Janesville five years ago, so I've had the joy of learning very quickly that we have the beauty of hometown vibes, but still a city and still functioning like one. I think what qualifies me most, I am currently a system administrator in the company I work for. We are a parent company of eight smaller companies, so I deal with a lot of different teams, all with different needs, all at a different time of day. So I'm constantly trying to pivot, trying to learn new workflows, trying to learn new systems. One of the things that I've enjoyed so far while learning about city government and learning how Janesville operates is how nuanced things can become. One big part of working for tech, you change one thing, you're changing everything. You have to constantly be able to acknowledge that each individual thing works kind of like a spider web. You have to take all different aspects of the system into consideration in order to get the proper solutions, and that is what I do for a living. That's what I enjoy doing. It's what makes me happy. Obviously, in addition to knowing all that, there's the actual customer service side of things where I have to actually be able to listen to the citizens while understanding how all those systems work. That's also part of what I do. I have a long track record of working in customer service. I've worked in hospitality industry. I worked at Apple for five years, and now I currently work for a private company. I think that both my tech experience and my customer service side experience of being able to remember what people want and ensure that I execute on that throughout the normal workflow of what needs to get done is what will help me shine through as a city council person. And I hope to put that to work for all of you. Again, thanks to WCLO, to the Rock County Civics Academy, and to all of you here at the Rotary Club for having us today, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Well, folks, the decision now is in your hands. Early voting is available two weeks before the actual election day. Election day is April 2nd. If you want to hear more, we will have the city council candidates hopefully in full mass this Thursday at 6:45 a.m. here at Rotary Gardens, and I'm very confident that you'd be welcome to join in on that conversation as well. About a third of the Milton School District is comprised of real estate that is located in the city of Janesville. And if you have an interest in the goings-on in the Milton School District or with the Milton City Council, the academy is hosting a forum tomorrow night beginning at 6:30 at the Milton School Administration Building on East High Street. We'll have these Milton School District candidates, there's four seeking three seats beginning at 6:30, and the Milton City Council at 8:00 p.m. If you're in the Janesville School District, you have a forum available to you this Wednesday evening at 6:00 p.m. It will be at the Italian House in the private dining area, and we will have all of the candidates for the three seats available in the Janesville School Board of Trustees race at that event. And again, it's one of those that you're encouraged to join us. I mentioned Thursday morning, we're back again at Rotary, and then on Monday, we will be back here at Rotary bringing the Janesville City Council to you. I'm sorry, the Janesville School Board to you in the hopes that you'll get a better, better sense and feel for, for what the candidates are standing for, what they're about, because we want you to, we want, we want you to become informed, to get involved in, in doing that, you can make a difference in your community. The candidates will be around for a few minutes for anybody that wants to visit with them. With that, I thank you so very much for your time and attention. Thank you.[1756.21][1756.21][applause]